All members of the board are present. I would like to entertain a motion to change the public comment session five to be placed after the superintendent's report number, Roman numeral number seven. All those in favor? Okay. We will approve the minutes from last Monday night's Board of Ed meeting and the budget session and the executive session. Those in favor? Okay. So we will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Tonight is the final stage of the budget adoption process. We have some handouts at the front, also online, everything that's led up to tonight. Tonight's really going to be just a summary. We're going to provide the board and the public with a summary of all of the legal necessities regarding the 2015-2016 budget. First, where is the revenue coming from for 2015-16? This particular slide shows the difference between this year, 2014-15 budget, and the 2015-16 budget. You can see that essentially the revenue comes from two places: increases to state aid and an increase to property tax levy. The proposed budget is $75.3 million, $75.4 million. That's a 3.86 percent increase budget to budget. The total assessed value of all the properties in Clarence and the towns that make up the school district is a little under $3 billion. We show that that would stay the same in 2015-16, although we fully anticipate that that will rise, causing the tax rate to be lowered. Our estimation of the tax rate at this point is $15.37 per thousand. The tax levy increase for this particular budget is 3.84 percent, lower than the cap number. When the board approves the budget, we are required to present it in three parts: an administrative part, capital expenses, and then program expenses. You can see the three big categories for the administrative expenses are salaries at the district office for all the employees who work there, and this also includes the buildings with the principals, assistant principals, and everyone who works for them; curriculum supervision, liability, and property insurance, about $100,000 increase year-over-year in administrative expenses. On capital expenses, the big expense is an increase in debt service, and this is because we refinanced one of our existing debt, one of our existing bonds last year. We're saving a large amount of money in the long run. It's a chunk of change of $800 added to the capital expenses for 2015-16. We do get state aid back on some of these capital expenses, about 70 percent. This is the instructional program, which is the largest portion of the budget. The increase here at $1.7 million includes the addition of 11 staff members that we presented in last week's budget summary. So those are the three parts of the particular budget: administrative, capital, and instructional program. We're required to mail a property tax report card to all the residents who reside within the four towns that make up the school district. This is essentially what the property tax report card looks like, and we're presenting it tonight also for Board of Education. Basically, it shows the budget for this year, 2014, compared to the budget that we're recommending for 2015-16. And then there's a line that shows a contingency budget. The contingency budget is very different than it was in past years. In past years, a contingency budget would mean if your budget failed at the polls, you'd still be able to increase certain portions. In the current iteration of contingency, you really can't do that. So this just shows mandated expenses for 2015-16 should the budget not pass. The important thing in the middle section, that's the levy, the property tax cap levy, calculated, showing this year, there was no difference between the cap and what we actually raised in the levy. But for next year, 2015-16, you see parenthetically the difference between A and B is $400,000. The levy for this year is $400,000 smaller than the actual cap amount. Then it just repeats the administrative program and capital component from the three slides that we just did. So this is the property tax report card. A little difficult to read, but this is the format that we're required by New York State to provide to the residents of the school district. So in addition to the property tax report card, you will also receive a budget newsletter. In the budget newsletter, there will be charts and graphs, things that were presented during all of the budget presentations that we've had since January. There will be summaries for each one of the four people running for the Board of Education, and there will be a couple of other articles in there as well. We hope to have that in homes, minimum one week before the budget. Again, this is worth repeating. This is a slide that we've used the last couple of budget presentations. This is the property tax estimates. This is at a tax levy of 3.84 percent, which again is lower than the cap, estimated rate of $15.37 per thousand. We're certain that that amount will be lower by the time we get all of the assessed valuations, especially in the town of Clarence. That really doesn't happen until late July, early August, and the actual dollar-per-thousand rate will be set by the Board of Education in the August meeting after we get all of that information. So on $100,000 home, $57 tax increase; $200,000 home, $114,000 tax increase; $300,000 home, $170 tax increase. Again, it's worth mentioning Clarence has met all of its obligations for the tax relief program that was put in by Governor Cuomo two years ago. Therefore, all homeowners in Clarence will receive a rebate on whatever the increase is to your taxes in this particular school year for 2015-16. That rebate should come in the form of a check someplace in the November timeframe. Quick summary of everything that we've been doing over the past three or four months in the creation of the budget. The tax levy of 3.84 percent is lower than the cap level, 4.7 percent. There are no position or program reductions in this budget, which was a goal of the Board of Education. To the contrary, there are 11 teaching positions that are restored in this budget, at least the funding for those 11 positions are restored within this budget. Homeowners will receive a rebate on the 2015-16 increase in property taxes. And then one thing worth mentioning, according to the way the governor's budget was eventually established and approved by the New York State Legislature, in order to receive the full amount of state aid increase, which for us was about $1.1 million, we must have a new teacher evaluation system successfully bargained with our teachers and principals union by November. We don't know any of the details yet, and they won't be released until June 30th, but that will give us a small amount of time, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to come to agree this with our bargaining units in order to get full state aid. So, members of the Board of Ed, those are the summary items, and we can put it up for responses by the Board of Ed or questions by the public.
Do any members of the Board of Ed have any questions before we turn it to public input? Okay. I assume we have some microphones available for people to...
We have a break. Yes, I want to decide if you use this one.
Okay. If you come down to either side, please state your name and direct the question to either Mr. Hicks or a member of the, or the school board.
Any questions?
Any questions?
My first question is, will this teacher evaluation system be totally in-house, or will you have to comply with something from the state as well?
The teacher evaluation system is going to be something that is prescribed by the New York State Education Department. So it will have two large components to it: observations of teachers, both by principals and other independent evaluators, and state test scores or the equivalent of local created scores based on student achievement.
Okay, so you will have to follow guidelines from the state?
Yes, we will.
If nobody asks any other questions, I'll ask one again. Has the school board been in contact with the state about the bureaucracy involved in this rebate system? You know, they're gonna give everybody the rebate. There's costs involved in mailing those checks, processing those checks, and then Cuomo's getting a big, he's reaping the rewards from that when people get the tax rebate from him. Why don't they just give it to the school district and at least cut out the cost to us so that he can look good?
I would say you would need to ask Mr. Cuomo that.
Has the school board, has anybody, any school boards around here brought Dan up? They should really be brought to light to the media and everybody.
The New York State School Boards Association have been lobbying with Albany against Albany for the past 30-plus years. So it's been the docket of things, and we've sent representatives down to have discussions with them about these particular things, but we need to just work with what is presented with us.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would like to see, you know...
Well, I would encourage you to drive down there and see what you can do.
Yeah, I'd love to.
On the surface to me, it doesn't sound like a bad subject, not in contact, but it, you know, may reduce the cost of doing that, and, you know, if you can get more money, maybe make that cost, you know, something we're looking into. I haven't personally talked, I haven't thought fruitfully to, you know, sit down with the idea, but I appreciate it, yes.
Any other questions from the community on the proposed budget?
Yeah, I don't think I need that.
Your name, please, sir.
Oh, Jim Mockler.
Okay, thank you.
I'm interested in having you share with us the thinking on not bringing back more staff, since there's room, well, better room under the tax cap.
I think that's a great question. I'll just repeat it. Again, the question was, can we give a explanation about why we used some of the money that we received in additional revenue this year to lower the tax levy from the cap number rather than using it to restore staff numbers? And again, the way we've been describing that over the course of time since January on is that the Board of Education began this particular budget cycle in the same way that we've done it over the past five years. We had two goals in mind. Number one, make sure that there's no reductions to programs or people, maintain the excellence of the Clarence School District. And number two, respect and honor property taxpayers and the property tax burden on people within the, within the district. So when we had a chance to take a look at utilizing funds, which we received this year in excess of what we originally planned, we tried to keep both of those goals in mind: lower the levy at the cap level. And the cap level this year at 4.79 percent was going to be higher than most surrounding school districts in our county. It was mostly due to debt service. It also had to do a little bit with the growth of assessments within the town of Clarence. So we felt it was a prudent compromise to use some funds, $400,000, to reduce that levy, use the remaining funds to restore some positions.
I would add, I would add that one thing that we looked at when restoring positions was a five-year projection. We didn't want to restore a position that may be vulnerable to a reduction in the next five years as well.
Any other questions from the community? Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report, Mrs. Claus.
Okay, so we need, F1, a resolution. The Board of Education approves and adopts the 2015-16 school year, a school budget with total expenditures of $75,392,337. The estimated tax levy for the 2015-16 is $44,68,450, which would require a simple majority approval at our main 19th budget approval date. Does any, have any final questions or anything else that you need to add to that break?
I'd love to just make a comment. When I was running for the Board of Education, I indicated that it was a reasonable tax increases, and I still maintain that philosophy. The question becomes, what is a reasonable tax increase? Some in the audience, there's no increase that would be acceptable. Others in the audience, there's any increase would be acceptable to them. We tend to hear from people that are on both ends of that spectrum, and when someone stands to speak, they tend to be branded in one of these camps, and, you know, they're cheered or they're good or... And I think we need to recognize that most of the people in our town are not here at these meetings, and most of them don't have children at school. And I think about how we arrived at some of the budget problems that we had a couple of years ago. And we spent money when times were good, and then we, when times were lean and the state pulled back funding, we had everything fragile at once. And I think we need to position ourselves better to withstand future budget problems. We can't tax the local tax, the local tax base so far, and we've been riding the waves of the fluctuation of state funding for years now. So, in my mind, it's not a matter of if, but when the state faces its next crisis and post-funding from us again. At that time, we're talking about gap elimination, restoration, not the increase in our funding that are taking more away from us. And I, I think we can expect that as time goes on. If we take the percentages out of it, I'm concerned a bit that when you look at the projected budget for 2019-2020, the five-year projection, we're going from $72.6 million to maybe $3.5 million. So five years from now, we're gonna be spending $10 million more just hoping to keep what we have, and not improve the educational program for our children. So that's a concern to me. I mean, we can congratulate ourselves for being better than other districts around us, but to me, that just means that they have bigger problems than we do in our district. So the proposed budget isn't perfect in any way. You know, there are, to some, too many positions are being restored, to others, there's not enough or not the right positions being restored. So, and even the necessity of some of the positions being restored could be debated, but those who suggest that things, you know, are not an absolute necessity, you know, they are berated by other people in the audience, and I think people sometimes who don't want to speak. And then sometimes members of the board are hesitant to, to share their feelings and opinions because, you know, they're literally branded on one side or the other, and instead of discussing things, then you tend to accept recommendations of the administration with not much discussion, and it appears to be rubber stamped, and because, to some extent, because of the environment that we face. You know, some people are trying to trivialize some of the tax increases, just a cup of coffee and things like that, but there are people who are really struggling there. Some of you may not know many of them, you know, some of you may not have people, know people that are poor, and, you know, you don't see the impact that it would have on them. No matter how I vote on this budget, you know, I'm gonna be cast as an enemy to somebody, and not on the school board to try to make friends or make everyone happy, or try and do what's right for the community as a whole. So before us, we have 3.9 percent increase in the levy, and, you know, it's less than the 4.7 percent that we proposed under the cap. I don't think I would be able to support 4.7 percent increase because it'd well off cases to throw of income, of personal income in your county. But at 3.9 percent, I don't think we can afford that every year, but this year, as was mentioned in the presentation, we have large debt service that's going to help us save money in the end. Again, I would request that some of the funding that we're approving tonight be used to help us better position ourselves for future budget fluctuations. And we need to do more proactively to position ourselves, to maintain opportunities for us to provide the waves of, of New York State funding. So we have a few what we consider extra dollars this year by some in the budget now to ask that some of it be used to investigate ways that we can be in a better position for when New York State may introduce funding in the future. My suggestion of online learning at our meeting last week, this is not the castle learning that your children do at home, but when I look at the, at the options just from the Catararas, Allegheny, Bosse's, just to the sound of us, they have a wide range of course offerings. Some of the, of the districts, you know, closer to New York City and Westchester County, they're offering architecture and archaeology as, as course options for their students through some distance learning. And that's not gonna be right for every student, it's not gonna be right for every course that's taken, but I think we should start looking at these options, get ourselves prepared for time when budgets may be reduced in the future. But because of, you know, because we are taking some money, we're reducing the tax levy, because a, a big portion of this is the debt service that's gonna help us in the end, I mean, support a dollar amount, but ask that some of it be used to prepare us for the future.
Jason, I think if nothing else, we've added this fourth opportunity to discuss it. I think that everyone has had an opportunity to ask questions or make comments without the fear of not being able to speak their opinion. I think everybody knows where everybody's position is on this. For the, as a whole, I think everybody wants what's best for the, for the, in the interest of the district and for the students that live here and the people that live here, which is the reason why we, at the very beginning, even before we knew what the total amount of funds were that we were going to receive, recognized that we needed to hear everyone and made the decision that we needed to get it below the cap, even though it would have been wonderful to restore more positions with that other $400,000. I think we all recognize that we represent everybody here, not just a particular group of individuals or special interest groups, but that we have to hear everybody, and, and with an, with an eye on that, we made the decision to reduce the levy in recognition of that, but also with understanding that there were things that we needed to do to restore positions and programs for the students for which, for whom we are all here for primarily. So I'd like to believe that we all work together, while we may have come from different positions on different ideas about how to fund it, and we all know that it can change on a whim, unfortunately, but that when we have the opportunity, that we deliberately and cautiously looked at the positions that we needed to address for students, that we are responsible for educating and getting them career-ready or college-ready, it's not just a matter that they move through 13 grades and then we kick them out the door. We need to have them be prepared for whatever avenue that they're going down. So if it means that we have to restore positions and recognize that we had to reduce the levy, then that's what we had to do in the, in what we were dealt this year. And I agree, we need to look at more creative ways in which to do that, because the days of just taking the state aid and throwing it in the pot are over. Tisha, do you want to pick up the microphone? Did you want to make a comment? This is, do you want to add anything before we do the vote?
I, I think before we were in trouble back a few years ago, I think it was because we lowered the levy, we lowered the rate so much, and then we used our fund balance. So we helped, we passed the savings off so much to the taxpayer, it ended up hurting the district in the long run. That's what really got us into this main trouble. And I guess one of the things I have trouble with too, Jason, is when you refer to some of us up here as rubber stamping things, that's the farthest from the truth. Just because the administrator thought something, we're not up, we're up here for the kids, not because someone told us we need these positions. These kids need the positions, they need librarians. This is one of the top districts in the area, and we don't have librarians full-time. That's, that's, it doesn't happen. Look at every other district. These are not things that we need, that we, we want, they're needs. And I just, when you say we're up here rubber stamping, and it was used the other, the other last week too, that's furthest from the truth, at least from my standpoint.
I said sometimes it can appear as rubber stamped because they don't hear this type of dialogue. You know, a lot of times when we come to meetings, it's just vote and things are done. So I think that this type of thing is helpful to, you know, I mean, even the positions that are restored, you know, we've seen a lot of positions, so very little discussions had on why we're choosing a librarian over a social worker or, or things like that. So that's the type of thing I'm talking about, not that, you know, I said it appears as rubber stamped because we're not having that type of discussion. People aren't seeing, hey, why are we choosing these positions over other positions? That's, that's what I said. I remember, I'm not trying to say, hey, we're just rubber stamped, but there's, there's not a lot of that discussion that's, that is to see. That was what I intended by, not, not, first of all, thanks, because I'm, is Dylan, does anyone else have to add to that, please?
Anyone else?
So with the, the funding and the resolution that we've got, how much flexibility do we have? I know we, I understand that we've identified the, the needs today and kind of the targets, and we've got the, the proposal kind of laid out, but, you know, we vote on this, the voters approve it, we move forward, and, you know, issues change, or, or we have a conversation about some of these things that Jason raised, and how much flexibility we have.
Well, I think we have flexibility up to a point. Directly after the community budget vote, which is May 19th, if we were going to make hires based on the recommendations of the 11 positions, that's a good time to post for those particular positions, to find quality candidates, and to get them through our personnel office in the prior to the middle of the summer. We wouldn't want to wait too long on posting of particular positions to fill. So while the budget just allocates the funds for 11 positions, it doesn't necessarily identify what those positions are, I would say we have until about a week, week and a half after the budget vote to come to a conclusion on exactly what we're going to do with those funds. And if we're not going to restore a position that was on that list, whatever the will of the board is, we will move forward from that point in time. I do think it's fair to let the community know in advance what things were being considered and the rationale behind why they were considered, and that was a request to the board that we did in the last couple of meetings.
Just to echo something that Jason said, I will concur, you know, nobody, well, I shouldn't say nobody, not many people in this community are gonna get 3.9 percent raises this year. I know I didn't. So I'm, I'm mindful of that. But we have to look at the long game, as we've talked about, and this up and down that we've seen is really not the appropriate way to approach it. Unfortunately, the last few years, we've seen ups, and that's what everybody remembers, but there's been a lot of years with downs. We look back over the last seven to eight years in this district, the levy, on average, has grown 2 percent a year, and I think that, by most people in the audience would agree, is a reasonable level. So that includes a lot of givebacks, the state funded, overfunded perhaps by some extent of the districts, and then audited us and asked us to give it back and not allow us to hold it for the rainy day. We ran into, the issues we ran into three years ago. Hopefully, this budget, which began at the 3.9 percent levy, 1.8 percent roughly, is the bond, which is saving $3.5 million over the life of the bond, the balance is 2 percent. I think it's reasonable, and it's proven, given everything that we have before us, and I think it is the right way to approach things looking forward.
I think I've been clear of where I stand in these meetings, and, you know, I'll be clear again that, you know, I'm voting against the budget tonight for the same reasons, you know, I think it's short-sighted to bring people back, only to wave off again in a few, few years' time as our role drops. And I think that, you know, in the last couple of years, we've had, you know, budgets, consecutive budgets well over 3 percent, and I don't know if that's sustainable, you know, until, you know, we...
it's, you know, we talk about rate a lot, but it's, it's getting, it has been a problem that's driven the problems here on the budget side of things. And asking, you know, continuing spending at more double rate inflation, I just don't think it's sustainable in the long term, so it puts us in a little difficulties. I mean, of course, our administration will tell us that the these positions are absolutely necessary, and we wouldn't expect anything else from our administration. Jeff wasn't asked coming back to us and asking us for more, there was something wrong, we wouldn't want him in our job. His job, his job is to make sure we have the best educational opportunities for our kids. Our job is to order the balance, the long term, and what's sustainable and what the community will support. And that's, you know, so from my perspective, that's why I have a hard time, it's not so much the money, I just think that bringing back the positions this time is not my thing to do.
My position is that I support the budget and I respect the comments from my fellow board members, and I just ask the community to do the same. Everyone has an opinion, everyone has a right to an opinion. And whether you agree with that opinion or not, please be mindful and respectful that it's a job that we were all elected to do, and we've done our best. So when you go to the polls, please keep that in mind, that everyone up here has tried, and sometimes, sometimes we make, I don't want to say bad decisions, but decisions that, as years go on, we regret, we learn from our mistakes, and right now, this particular board, everyone's trying to learn what has worked and what has not worked from past budgets. We think that we put as much work into this budget as we possibly can. So I support it, and I also want, obviously, you to support it, but again, everyone is entitled to their opinion. So thank you, and you don't have to vote.
Okay, and I need a resolute, I need a motion, first motion. To approve. Okay, and a second. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, Carrie is six to one. Jeff, or Rick, would you do the?
Sure, well, we also would need a separate motion for the board to approve the property tax report card that Jeff showed you.
Motion? Second? Okay, those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and the chairperson have a vote?
Yes, Mr. Ryan Lysinski, attorney of Hudson Russ, has volunteered to be our chairperson of the vote, and the PTOs have also volunteered their time throughout the day to be vote inspectors. So I'd like to recommend that we approve Mr. Lysinski and the inspectors for the election.
Motion? Okay, those in favor? Opposed? Okay, financial reports.
One of the things, positive thing, is, believe it or not, fuel is only $2.07 a gallon. So we actually might have a low that'll come in just below two. Otherwise, there's not too much for the financial reports. We did receive our last, February, the last group of property tax money for every county for the delivery of taxpayers, which is really just under 2%, so it's really a very good collection.
Does anyone have any questions on any of the financial reports? Motion to approve? That would be a motion approved at four. Second? Okay, those in favor? Okay, the scheduled bills, anyone have any questions on that? Okay, motion to approve? Second? Okay, those in favor? Okay, Carrie, Dr. Patac, your first.
For you, you have recommendations for additions to the substitute teacher list.
Any questions on the list? Motion to approve? Second? Those in favor? Okay, the non-instructional?
You also have before your request to approve leave of absence as well as the addition of someone to the substitute list.
Okay, any questions on either one of those, P2 or P3? Okay, motion? Second? Those in favor? Okay. Special ed students activities?
Just before I jump in, man, I just want to have a little special recognition for some of the accomplishments of our kids this week. Our mock trial team won the regional championships and are on to the state finals, so congratulations to them. Our art students swept the first three places in the Congressional Art Show for Assemblyman, or I'm sorry, for Representative Collins, and I just want to point out that Mr. Showalter's daughter received the highest score in the winning drawing, and her drawing will be, her drawing will be displayed at, in the Capitol Building for the better part of a year, so congratulations to our kids. Third, our destination imagination teams, one from the middle school and one from the high school, won their regional, regional competition, and they're also moving on. And Mr. Lottie's daughters are on that particular, is it the middle school or the high school team?
A son and a daughter on the middle school, they won the state competitions, they won the group.
So congratulations to the destination imagination. This, this, in the past couple of weeks for special education, 42 committee on special education decisions, 15 committee on special education decisions, mostly annual reviews, things that are out of the ordinary for this time of year.
Motion to approve? Second? Those in favor? Okay. Music field trip?
Before the board, we're seeking your approval and we're recommending the biennial music field trip for the bands to Walt Disney World in Orlando. There's a full itinerary of events, the kids participate and compete, and they also have a public concert. I think that's a long day, a long day in central office. And we're, this is something that the kids look forward to, the students pay for this themselves, and we're recommending that the board approve the trip.
Okay, thank you. Motion? Second? Those in favor? Okay, all right. Before you, a list of the scheduled meetings, our next are tomorrow morning. At 7:00 AM, we have a Voces budget vote in Conference Room B, and then our next regular meeting is May 11th, and it is in the Clarence Lecture Hall. Upcoming events, there's a ton of concerts, music concerts, two pretend today for no school grades K through eight on April 29th. So we are at the point for our next public comment session. The comments, microphones will be available, or are these, I don't think I need a microphone.
Now that the budget has been approved and is going to go for vote, I guess I just have a question then. I know that Mr. Showalter and Mr. Lottie have had concerns about it, but specifically for you two, going forward at this point, as it's been approved by the board, do you support a yes vote for this budget, or will you continue on your last round?
Your last one, you ready?
And Mr. Lottie. Yeah. I know you voted for it, but, you know.
I voted yes.
Well, if you already had concerns about it, so I was wondering.
My position won't be changing.
So you'll be advocating for a yes vote?
I don't have any idea. I'm waiting for you to answer your name, whether it's R. D.
Um, my, oh, I'm sorry. My question, my comment is in response to Mr. Lottie's comments, and I actually found compelling, and I agreed with the idea that we have to balance the needs of people in the district or circuit financially. But I think I just want to speak to the importance on the flip side, that we don't assume that kids that happen to grow up in big houses with financial needs don't have needs that aren't met by the schools, that aren't addressed in really significant and important ways through the restoration of the positions that this budget seeks to restore, through the opportunities management for extra curriculum activities provided by schools. I just, I also support the speech on the flip side, that while we shouldn't assume that, you know, that we can speak for everyone in the district's financial situation, I think we can also assume that because we're a district that is not thought of as struggling financially compared to other districts in the area, we don't have kids who aren't struggling in all sorts of ways, depending on what their financial situation is. And to speak, I think to Mr. Showalter, from a personal perspective, kind of an interesting connection, and I won't make this personal, it's positive, actually, it's kind of an interesting personal connection. I actually grew up on the street from your family, and your mom used to send clippings of, from the Bee, from all of the silly little plays and musicals, and every time I was in the Bee, she would send a clipping to my mother. My mother has saved them all, the Bee years, she still has them, and your mom would write these biggest little notes, and always say, I.
Those are searching, seriously.
My mom, my mom Sandy saved your, your clipings, and then they would always say, you must be so proud, and she's done it again, and I could like me after coffee. And so she saved them all, and she likes to pull them out, show them to people all the time. I was a really awkward kid in hospital, and I had a big hair, and a really big nose, and, and it was so, it was so embarrassing to me at the time, but, you know, the Bee, they're so great, and they're always there to sample pictures. And so the interesting thing about our connection is that I, I was one of these kids in a big house, and I had all sorts of challenges, and personal struggles growing up, and it was the schools that were my sanity. It was schools that were my strength and my foundation and my support and my guidepost and my inspiration. Some of the struggles are too personal to talk about, but one of them was pretty public. I, my family went through a time of extreme financial hardship, and so, you know, there was in the big house, and you'd think, well, it's not a poor family, so they're not struggling, but my only sanity through much of high school was schools and teachers and the opportunities that were there for me, that a couple of years ago, the budget didn't pass and we were completely eliminated, and some of the things that saved me in school, like drama club, and, you know, all those silly things I was in the Bee for. So I bring this up because our connection, the reason that you and I share this connection, that my mom, you know, still remembers your mom and speaks to my neighbor, the thing that connects us as a community are our schools. Our schools are our, our identity as a community. Our schools are who we are, our homecoming football games and our spring musicals and our mock trials, our mock trial team, of course, our mock trial team and our art shows and our, you know, our sports and all of that stuff. That gives kids a reason to go on sometimes when things aren't as rosy and aren't all rainbows and even horns, whatever they may appear on the outside. I, I've been pretty successful in life, I went out and took the PhDs and everything I wanted to have in education. So just, I want you to keep those things in mind, we're all connected, I love the, the idea that, you know, no matter what side we fall on, we're one community, and our identity is, I think, kind of a universal. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. You know, the weekend, I talked with some parents who probably would have agreed with, you know, my position, and my point was, I think we're all on the same side here, we want what's best for our community, we want, we want what's best for our schools, you know, I think if we overreach the community, will come to us and not look down on budget, we don't want that, you know, and we don't want to go through the painful experience that late teachers are. And so I think we have the same goals, and we think in every same way that we express, you know, my love for, for the school, the community, you know, you know, and what I've done for my children, you know, it's been, it's been great, you know, great, and I want it to continue to be great. And, you know, as we go through here, you know, we've talked about it, it's a bit of compromise, you know, to get to the, to the right, and hopefully, and hopefully that leads us to the place where we want to be. And so, you know, when, even when the budget passes, you know, I'll be the biggest supporter there is, you know. So I, but I think we all have the same goal, you know, as I had the opportunity to work with the other board members here, I have a lot of respect for them, for the time, the effort, and for their deals for, for the community and the schools to.
See, should, see, should this be, the reason that I'm, my concern is that we're heading down the same path that we were previously, and I don't want that to happen again. And I think if we do things the same way, we're going to end up with the same results. So my concern is that we, we do things proactively to prevent a large impact on students as state budgets fluctuate. So that's my concern, is that we just position ourselves differently.
I'm coming down to get a microphone, because I mean, sometimes we can't hear things in the back.
I just have, I have a question for you, Roger. And I, I just hope you can put to rest a nagging question that I have here, and I'm not a cynical guy by nature, people who know me, I'm pretty optimistic, and I've heard both you and Jason speak a lot about, thinking about the, the needs of the taxpayers, people on fixed incomes and the group, and the individuals that support that.
My Q modular homes, and I didn't know Paul Stephen until I was running for Board of Education. I had no business, previous business dealings with him at all. You know, I, I made it clear at the time that I felt the 10% tax increase was too much, but that I'd, you know, I'd support reasonable budgets, you know, I had, I had no business dealings with him prior to that. As a result of meeting him, you know, we found that there were some mutual business agreements that might be beneficial, but, but the, you know, I don't have discussions with him on matters that are related to the board, you know, so I just take that for what it's worth, believe it or not, but that's the reality of the situation.
I think I speak for all board members, I don't think you could pay us enough to do this job. So there's, there's not, we don't do this for financial reasons. I don't believe what you want, so, you know.
Yeah, I don't think that's the point, right?
I think, I think, you know, we, we contribute, I make contributions to the foundation, and, you know, I think the point I'm making, that it's not about the money, you know, it's not about the money, and I also put a word, and I'm concerned about where we're going on. That's it, so believe what you want.
Second question, you talk about looking long term, going forward, and the sustainability of what we're talking about and what we've been talking about the past four or three years, but I think what Michael was talking about was, if you're going to look ahead five or 10 years, you have to look back five or 10 years and see how we got to 2013. And I think that your focus is very broad looking forward, but it's quite narrow looking backwards, and I don't necessarily think that even if we're talking about the budget that was just approved, the voters is as unsustainable as you may think it has to be if we look at past history.
Well, I think when we're talking about spending twice the rate of inflation, and we, we have a shrinking enrollment here, it just doesn't jive, and I think, you know, the problem will happen is when we go to voters with that, you know, we can't guarantee that the voters are going to, right now, accept that every time, because like I said, they're not getting.
Because like I said, they're not getting 1.8%. And at some point, we can't just keep doing it. So, I mean, we've had a trend the last couple of years that we've been doing. If we keep doing it, I don't think it's sustainable. And we may believe otherwise, but I'm looking at the history of the spending and that's what leads us to the previous problems.
I just have a question about the future of the school should this budget not pass. Right now, last, I don't remember the exact number, if it was five positions that really were mandated by state requirements, special ed, to math and to ELA, AIS. If this budget doesn't pass and we have board members who aren't supporting it, those 11 positions are then eliminated or not reinstated. And that's got to mean something else. There have to be more cuts. Or what else is going to happen should this budget not pass?
If the budget was not to pass, the 11 positions would be out definitively. And we'd need to find somewhere in the neighborhood of $225,000 to $250,000 in other portions of the budget. We think we can do that without getting into personnel, but it would have to come from supplies, equipment, contractual items. In order to make it balance at a zero, we would need that amount of money.
I just go, if it doesn't pass, we have the opportunity to go back to the voters one more time.
Correct.
And that's what we would do. We would vote things again. We would go back to the voters one more time.
Would you be in support of it the second time?
Yeah, probably. I can't say because we haven't discussed what that entails. But I'd like to be, I hope I can be part of that discussion.
Question, what happens to the students that have the services that are needed for those positions? I think these are IEP students, students that have special needs. These are not just... These are not electives anymore. These are things that are mandated, that we need to take care of as is required by law. But it's also our fiduciary responsibility as a board member to make sure that those things are taken care of for the kids that have those needs.
Right. Insofar as the special education position, we're going to have to find a way to add that next year, no matter what. That's the one position that, from a state mandatory perspective, is something that we absolutely positively have to do. With the remediation teachers and those teachers that are teaching intervention, we can continue to do some of the things that we do now, which is, in our opinion, not as productive as what we could be doing should we add those additional positions. It's mostly outside the school day intervention at this point.
So they would bear the brunt of the budget going down?
I don't know if I'd character, I would say that a budget that would be voted down twice would be a negative thing for Clarence.
As whole, but particularly those students that have unmet, serious needs that need to be addressed.
Yes.
I think the experience we had in Clarence was, you know, when we came back down to whatever level that the voters would comfortably pass, we would take it easy. And I think, you know, if this budget didn't pass, I think we would be able to find that, have the ground where we could satisfy the taxpayers and also, you know, meet our needs.
Well, we can ask the foundation to fund those types of positions, Roger.
Well, and just to build on that, I, if we're already below the cap by a decent amount and that doesn't get approved, I'm not sure what that means in the context of a second vote. Because, you know, if you've already got something that's kind of a compromise and we, you know, two votes voted down is zero. So is there some number that's better in there? Or is it about what the spending is on? And we've had that conversation about the positions and the value of those individual positions. So I think it would be very challenging to figure out how to, how to even communicate what that second vote would mean.
Were there any other, Mr. Showalter?
Yeah, my comment last, the, I mentioned that I could still have some kids. You know, my kids are going to be in the schools for over a decade yet still. And the worry I have is that if we don't take the longer approach on this, we're going to have another civil war like we had a couple of years back, where there's going to have to be a reckoning between the state and all the finances. And, you know, that was an ugly time in the town's history, can I say? You know, I think that budget of 1.8% really, I think, was a black eye in our town. You know, the news media was here for that whole week and, you know, they were like, you know, vultures.
They were here for a month. It was a month.
Yes, it was a month. And for all of us involved, that was, that was an ugly time. It was an ugly time for our town. And I think that's what, me as a parent, I want to avoid. Because, you know, then the kids are all at each other and it's just an ugly period. And I think as the board, you have that responsibility to take that long view. And I think in our discussions in these last couple of weeks, last months, I think that's coming out. You know, I'm appreciative of that as a parent because I see the importance of balancing all that. You know, I want the best for my kids, but yet I'm a taxpayer and, you know, I've lived here in my town, this town, for close to 30 years. And so, you know, it's important that we balance all these things. And the comment about rubber stamping was from me last week. And I'm glad to see that's not happening. I'm glad that we have someone on the board that's speaking up and giving us alternatives, you know. And I'm grateful for that as a parent and a taxpayer. All these things, you know, that we can balance together. And I think these discussions have been fruitful. Thank you.
Hi, hi, members of the B. I just have a question. I'm here with Alan about when we looked back at what happened years ago. We looked at our history before that. I think when I talked to people who I knew who voted down about this stuff, a lot of people said to me, "I would have done small increases all along. It was just too much of a tent call at once for my family to really be able to do that." And I can see where that is. And I guess my concern is if we don't do these small increases to try to break things back. My kids are greatly affected by these, by the reductions that happened a few years ago. When I look at my sixth grader and what he received when he was in kindergarten, first grade, and I look at my first grader, it's nice and vague what they, the benefits of what they're getting. And seeing that on my fourth grader right in between, I feel like he's been from all over because of trying to figure out what are we doing? How are we going to make up, you know, make up through the things that are gone? So I was happy to see things come back because I feel like we have to rebuild a little bit just to get us to a point where we're going to be okay. And we don't start where we can still say we're an excellent school, a school of excellence. And my concern is, I don't understand, or I guess my question is, I don't understand the right. I totally understand where you're coming from, looking at it online, or at any dead end. And I think that are all really, I don't understand your position at all and what you're saying. And I want to understand. That's why I've come to these meetings for years. And I'm so happy at that point, too. I'm so thankful for not having things on video. So if you can't make meetings, you can go back. I watch those videos when I can't be here. And the fact that everybody don't just sit and understand, that we hear the discussion because it's educational for all of us behind the scenes because we're not in all those discussions. So thank you for that. But could you just, because I really want to understand what is enough. We're already so, we're, there's only five school districts that are over the house, and I guess...
If you look at the 10 years before 2013, when we look at the spending, we went from a budget of about $50 million to $79,000 in those 10 years. It's an average of 0.4% or so. That's what I'm saying, God, isn't that wrong? We got to a point where we were so dependent on the state and spending every little thing that when that money came back, it had to be something drastic. So that's, you know, that's my whole point in all this is that if we watch the spending, if we control the spending, everything else will take care of itself.
So what do you think with us being, like, when we talk about our costs and how effective, how cost-effective we are as a district? When you look at that spending, when I see what was cut in 2013, I don't see anything that was cut that wasn't beneficial to the kids. So I guess, I know you're talking about the spending, but where do you think, right now, we can not spend? Where can we spend less?
We cannot add 11 jobs that will be laid off in the short run as the enrollment goes. My point is that I think if the ratios aren't right, they're going to be coming right in the short run. We got the demographics on our side. We got a growing, you know, and enrollment is decreasing. Let's stay the course and watch the spending and it'll work out.
Is enrollment, is the enrollment decreasing all in one area? Like, we're going to not have this one grade level or this one school? Or is it so spread out across...
It comes at all grade levels.
So there's really, so, I mean, if you take one kid out of every third grade and one kid out of every sixth grade, you're still going to have 27 or 28 kids.
But generally, as the newer classes come up, Mr. Dixon's right, they're smaller than the class.
Without accounting for next year's kindergarten, yes. Next year's kindergarten is larger than projected. And if that trend continues, then we expect the elementary enrollment to stabilize. Just one quick point, and people can go back and take a look at the last two budget presentations that are online. We have a five-year projection. We have assumptions within the five-year projection. It's 2% state aid, which is historically what we've always received, even in the worst of years. It's someplace between 2.5 and 3.5 on the levy, which is where our levy's going to be, given the amount of debt service we have and the amount of growth that happens within the town of Clarence. So we believe, and I'll just say it for me, Rick and I believe that the budget that we have is sustainable. I don't want to publicly disprove Mr. Showalter. I'm just saying you have a different point of view. And that the five years that we put out there, we do think, now, if costs rise dramatically, if for some reason state aid does not come in at 2%, then we're going to have an issue with some of that sustainability. But we think the state has turned the corner around the recession. We think 2%, this year it was 6% as an increase. The gap elimination adjustment for Clarence is still at 1.8 million dollars. That's money that's floating out there that is eventually going to be returned to the district. We hope that, we hope that happens over the next couple of years. We have a sustainable allocated fund balance at 1.85 billion dollars. In past years, we had $5 billion allocated fund balance numbers. So the sustainability argument is something that the Board of Education and the administration has talked through a lot. Mr. Showalter has been a proponent of it, and as he has forced our thinking in it. We think that the next five years are sustainable with very, very conservative assumptions.
I just have a quick question. Obviously, Mr. Showalter is the only noble here. I don't mean to, I don't want to attack him here tonight. But we talked about sustainability and cost effectiveness. I think it is a very important consideration. We've also talked about not being rubber stamped. My question is, what is a number that you could get behind? Is it 2%? Is it 1%? Is it zero? What is it?
Well, I would like to think that, you know, that we would be able to stabilize at greater than the, you know, our spending. We should be able to go with the rate of inflation.
So it's like 1.20 something percent, right?
Yeah, sure. In the long term, that's my question.
Over the past 10 years or so, hasn't inflation, we had a certain degree of, about a 3.3% gap. So where are we really talking?
I don't have those figures in front of me.
I'm saying, if you look at it in overall...
Hasn't been, hasn't been 3.5.
Had we stayed at the rate of inflation for the time period you've been talking about in the past, our current tax rate would be $20, so I'm not saying...
Once again, we're back to the whole rate, the rate, whatever I'm talking about, spend.
Like, you're going back and forth between spending, when it's immediate, and rate of inflation, when it's immediate.
But you never bring up a session value. You don't like to talk about...
I mean, you have one person talking at a time. There's a lot of kids who disagree with each other.
So that's just my point of view. You may disagree, but I'm just, I'm just worried about this, and I don't know. So obviously, I'm the minority on the board here, so, you know, I, you know, what can I say, you know?
Dennis, where you are, I live in the town. 16 years ago, my wife and I moved to Clarence because of the school system. We've been very pleased with the education our two daughters have received. We feel bad about the cuts over the last five years. 114 positions, I believe. I think this budget is sustainable. I've looked at the figures for the next five years. I want the same thing. My youngest daughter's a senior. She'll be graduating in two months. But I think it's important that we try to get back some of these positions. I think it's 11% or 14% of what we've cut over the last five years. And so I think it is sustainable. I'm going to work and talk to my neighbors that we pass it. And I appreciate the work you've done.
I'm very impressed with the different views that have come out, and you've been very polite to each other. I appreciate the fact that you've got your five years done. I have no dogs in this fight. My kids are all grown. My kids are older than all of you. And God knows how old I am. But the thing is, the thing is, a good school system is something we can all be proud of. And I've been proud of it for years. I was scared when, two weeks before the vote, at that terrible time, el came this really brochure of the set, and these are your neighbors, not one of them, who were my neighbors, by the way. And it said a number of things that were not quite true. They were just close enough to the truth that I couldn't really bring out my lawyer against them, although I was going to. I was really upset, and the problem was, there was no way to fight back against it because we hadn't put out what a wonderful position we have, that we have a five-year plan ahead, that you have all these things in place, that there is just as much. I know what we have to put out on that thing that no one can understand. And I appreciate that you have to do that. But I wonder if it wouldn't behoove you to have someone who is really slick put something together for you. You certainly deserve it. You work very hard. Have someone put together a brochure that shows what's going on, where your money's going, what the five-year thing is, so that when my neighbor next door, who is a bright woman, votes against the damn budget because she looked at this silly thing and believed it, I mean, it just drove me crazy. And she wasn't the only one. It was people in my town that went the same way. And it wasn't because they worried about the difference in rates. It was because they believed things that weren't true. Now, we could vote against budgets when things don't seem right. And that's our right, and that's a good thing to do. But we shouldn't be led by things that aren't always true. And you have the right to put out information. I know you can't actually politic this. I do understand all of this. But I do think that you can certainly put your position in a better position, excuse that, than what we have done. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you very much.
I just want to comment. I, you know, we talked about how things have been decimated and destroyed in our district. And I'll just say, my children are getting a great education today in Clarence. They have great teachers. They have extracurricular activities. I hear people saying that they're taking three study halls. I have to tell my daughter, please don't take that other class because you've already got too much on your plate. You know, she doesn't have lunch and doesn't have a study hall. There are courses that these children can get into. They choose not to, and they're taking study halls. So as much as we talk about how bad things are, I think there's a lot of good. And I think let's take that good and try to make a little better.
Just to wrap up, I've been a superintendent for 15 years, the longest in Erie County at this point. I can say without question, I've worked with many different boards of education. The board of education that you have in front of you are hardworking people who have best interests of kids in mind. I honestly say that. I can say that every one of them are people that I'm proud to work with. I don't know if everyone recognizes that this kind of participation in the budget process just doesn't happen in other districts. People are lucky to get two or three people at their budget meetings. So I thank the community. We've had great participation and part of the community. This board has worked extraordinarily hard. Everyone is, has opinions and they push thinking, and that's what makes this such a great school district. So thank you very much for coming out and being part of this process.
Thank you. Okay.
I just have one quick question. Is that okay?
That's fine, it's outside of the, I'm very, sure.
Okay, number one, will you be putting out a line item budget like we have in the past?
Yes, actually, the line item budget for 2015-16 is posted on our website right now.
Okay. And the second point I'd like to make is, you know, here in New York State, we, I don't think anybody can disagree that we have a high tax burden, whether it be fuel taxes, income taxes, fuel taxes, causes our fuel to be 50 cents more a gallon than other states. You know, you work, if you give up 30, 40, 50% of your income in the form of taxes, has Mr. Hicks, have you called the New York State Lottery and asked them where all this money for education is going? Have you called it, asked where all the casino money has gone? You know, it was mentioned that, that, you know, Cuomo is robbing funds for education to pay for the general budget. He does that with all sorts of it. He raised 2.3 billion out of the comp fund that businesses paid, you know, for work in his town. He raised the polls, he raised the through-aid tour, he raised the fuel tax. You know, we'd like to see the board and the superintendent trying to give back our money.
What I can say is that the group that we lobby hardest are legislators.
They're very, I hate to say it, they really are.
We have conversations with the governor's office and we have conversations with legislators, yes.
Have you ever discussed the line lottery?
No, specifically no. But we have discussed in great detail funding to education.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussion. Discussion of matters related to discipline of a particular person and matters related to the negotiations with the CTA. Please, please, favor. Good evening.